Okay, I want to call together, call it a order. I call together, call it a order. The November 25th, 2014 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. I want to welcome those of you that are here in the council chamber to the council chamber tonight. I also want to welcome those who might be watching us on TV, those who might be watching on their computers, those who might be listening to us on their computers, those who might be listening to us on their radios. This is your city government, and we do want you to participate in it in any way you can. So again, we thank you for being here and joining with us. I'm going to ask the clerk take the roll call of the council members.
Herman?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Pansky?
Here.
Fitzgerald?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Peck?
Here.
Tower?
Here.
Present seven.
Okay, I'm going to ask everybody to rise for the invocation, the pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be led by council member Herman, and we'll have our students lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask our students to stand up here again and turn around and face out. I'm going to come down and join you. Why don't you turn around so everybody can see you dressed up tonight, so I'm sure people want to see you. We're most appreciative of you coming down and helping us tonight. But I think some of these people like to learn a little bit about the two of you. So I'm going to pass the microphone down, and why don't you tell me your name, where you go to school, what grades you're in, and since we're in the Thanksgiving season, there's Thanksgiving coming up in just a couple of days, I'm going to ask you, what's something that you're personally thankful for?
My name is Ellis Schaefer. I'm in fourth grade, and I go to Carl Trager Elementary School. One thing that I'm thankful for is my friends and family in my house.
My name is Caroline Coons, and I go to Carl Trager Elementary School. I'm in fourth grade. One thing that I'm thankful for is my friends.
Thank you, and again, we do appreciate you coming tonight. I do have a certificate for each one of you, so Ellen, there's yours on top. Caroline, there is yours. We have some applause for these young ladies who are off this afternoon. And now the two of you are welcome to take off. You can find your parents, go home, and do whatever for the rest of the evening. Also tonight, I have a proclamation. And Tom Grogan, you want to come up and join me? Proclamation has to do with a project that's being done by some university faculty and students, but primarily it's a student project. And I'll ask you to comment on it here, to Tom, in a second. But let me read the proclamation first of all. Whereas Oshkosh is a strong community with a proud history and rich heritage, and whereas, excuse me, the people who call Oshkosh home come to the community for many reasons and with stories of challenge, triumph, and perseverance in pursuing their life's goal. And whereas the Humans of Oshkosh project is being developed and coordinated as part of the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh with the help from faculty, staff, and students at the University of Wisconsin-Oshkosh. And whereas the initiative is showcasing the stories, the narrative, and the life experience of people from this region. And now therefore, I, Bert Tower, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, in recognition of the presentation that will be held on December 5, 2014, do hereby proclaim that Friday, December 5, 2014, as noted as Humans of Oshkosh Day. That the residents of Oshkosh are urged to reflect on the activities and accomplishments of all who make Oshkosh their home. And that in participating, and that the participating students who capture these stories on the Humans of Oshkosh blog are recognized and commended for their work in recording and capturing stories that represent pieces of the broader sense of history that make our community so strong, proud, and diverse. So I want to present this to you. Maybe you could just make a couple of comments about the project.
Thank you, Mayor Tower. Tom Grogan from the chancellor's office of the university. There's essentially more than 100 stories captured on blog that are catching images of people that make Oshkosh great. We're envisioning this as part of an ongoing effort to capture more stories from more people, to have more people understand the great things that happen in our community. So on Friday, December 5th, on campus, we'll have a program at the Union Theater, and would invite those members of the community that would like to join with us for that celebration to come to campus on that evening. We do thank the mayor and the city of Oshkosh for recognizing the effort that's reflected here in the proclamation.
Do you have a time, Tom? You mentioned the date, but do you know what time it is? Evening, afternoon?
I believe it's 5:00 p.m.
Okay. You can't if you happen to...
Yeah, it's 5:30.
5:30, 5:30, okay. Thanks a lot. We appreciate the project, appreciate your efforts on this. Okay, I have a number of public hearings. The first public hearing I'll be reading on will be voting on tonight, so I'm going to read it three times. If you'd like to speak to it, feel free to come up to the microphone and do so. The first one has to do with Resolution 14-504. Approve final resolution vacating portion of Michigan Street north of West Fourth Avenue. Resolution 14-504, approve final resolution vacating portion of Michigan Street north of West Fourth Avenue. Third and final reading, Resolution 14-504, approve final resolution vacating portion of Michigan Street north of West Fourth Avenue. I see no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
Still moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I see none. I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-504.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Quid seven.
Okay, the next two resolutions will not be voted on tonight. They'll be voted at the next council meeting because they require readings at two council meetings, but I will read each one three times. While I'm reading it three times, if you'd like to come forward and speak to it tonight, you may. You may also have the opportunity to speak to it at the next council meeting. First one is Ordinance 14-505, approve rezoning 2105 South Keller Street from C2 General Commercial with a Highway 41 overlay to C2 General Commercial with a Highway 41 overlay and a planned development overlay. Second reading, Ordinance 14-505, approve rezoning 2105 South Keller Street from C2 General Commercial with a Highway 41 overlay to C2 General Commercial with a Highway 41 overlay and a planned development overlay. Third and final reading, Ordinance 14-505, approve rezoning 2105 South Keller Street from C2 General Commercial with a Highway 41 overlay to C2 General Commercial with a Highway 41 overlay and a planned development overlay. Last reading, Ordinance 14-505, approve rezoning 2105 South Keller Street from C2 General Commercial with a Highway 41 overlay to C2 General Commercial with a Highway 41 overlay and a planned development overlay. Okay, we'll go on to the next one, and we will be voting on that, the one I just mentioned at the next meeting. Okay, this one is Ordinance 14-506, approve official mapping of extension of Farmington Avenue extending easterly and south-southerly from existing Farmington Avenue to Christian Drive, and the extension of Christian Drive extending easterly, north-northerly to Farmington Avenue. Second reading, Ordinance 14-506, approve official mapping for extension of Farmington Avenue extending easterly and south-southerly from existing Farmington Avenue to Christian Drive, and the extension of Christian Drive extending easterly and north-northerly to Farmington Avenue. Third and final reading, Ordinance 14-506, approve official mapping for the extension of Farmington Avenue extending easterly and south-southerly from existing Farmington Avenue to Christian Drive, and the extension of Christian Drive extending easterly and north-northerly to Farmington Avenue. Once again, this will be available for discussion at the next council meeting, will be voted on at the next council meeting. Okay, that takes us to the next item on the agenda, which is citizen statements to council. This is when you have an opportunity, if you would like to come to the microphone and comment on something in the city that you think is doing, is going well, or something that you're concerned about. So the microphone is open right there. There are some rules with it. You can only speak for five minutes. When you come to the microphone, we want your name and address. We ask you to direct all your comments to the council. Nothing later on in the agenda may be discussed at this point, and no electioneering. Anybody like to come forward? I see no one coming forward. Takes us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are items that the administration considers to be non-controversial in nature, and as such, they present them to the council for consideration as a total package. Either a council member or a citizen may ask that any individual item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, and at that point, I'll remove it from the consent agenda and then bring it up later. Okay, what I'm going to do is read through these, so as I read through them, if there's a particular item that is of interest to you, please come up to the microphone, give us your name and address, and speak to this, the particular item. Okay, approval of bills presented by the finance director. Receipt and filing of museum board minutes from October 2, 2014. Resolution 14-507, approve professional service agreement with AECom for final design and project oversight, Jeldwin, east of Oregon, Street River Walk. Resolution 14-508, approve granting easement to Jackson Square Apartments LP, property south of 2490 Jackson Street. Resolution 14-509, approve option to purchase partial J from North Point Development Corporation, corner of Jackson Street, Marion Road. Resolution 14-510, approve spotlight designation, authorize redevelopment authority to acquire 1212 Oshkosh Avenue. Resolution 14-511, award contract to ground effects of Wisconsin Inc. for grounds and landscape services for redevelopment authority and go transit. Resolution 14-512, approval of agreement for environmental engineering services with AECom for various 2015 paving and utility projects. Resolution 14-513, approval of special events, and these next several will be special events, I won't say special event each time. Festival foods, Oshkosh YMCA, Oshkosh Boys and Girls Club to utilize city streets for their festival foods, Turkey Trot, November 27, 2014. Resolution 14-514, Otter Street Fishing Club, Inc. to utilize Menominee Park for their Otter Street Fishery, February 6 and 7, 2015. Resolution 14-515, Detry Run to utilize Leach Amphitheater and city streets for their Oshkosh Marathon, April 19, 2015. Resolution 14-516, Otter Street Fishing Club, Inc. to utilize Menominee Park for their Otter Street Walleye Tournament, June 19, 20 and 21, 2015. Resolution 14-517, Stacy Weber to utilize Opera House Square and Close Market Street for their Weber Pumas Wedding Ceremony, August 8, 2015. Resolution 14-518, Otter Street Fishing Club, Inc. to utilize Menominee Park for their Otter Street Kids Fishery, August 8, 2015. Resolution 14-519, disallowance acclaimed by Artie and Ed's Drive-In. Resolution 14-520, approve appointments for Board of Review and Museum Board. Resolution 14-521, approve special Class B licenses. See no one coming forward? One last chance to come forward on any of these items? See no one even walking towards the microphone? I'm going to bring it back to the council to see if they have questions or desire to have any particular item removed from the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do have a question regarding Resolution 14-510, the location on 1212 Oshkosh Ave. If Mr. Davis can come on up. My question is, how do you go about working between, I mean, these buildings are very close together? So how do you go about removing such a small area in between these other buildings, and what plans do we have for this area?
The question about demolition, we'll contract that out because it is a very tight working space. We can't use city crews for that particular type of demolition, so we'll bid that out to a responsible licensed demolition expert, and they'll go through the pre-demolition review to make sure that all the supporting members and the adjoining properties will not be damaged, and if they are, we are responsible, and the contractor's responsible for repairing that.
Do you have any idea the cost estimation on something like that, bringing in an outside source?
We haven't bid that out yet. We will be bidding that out.
Okay. And do we know what we would like to see in that area, or?
It's a redevelopment of the intersection. So the intersection would be redeveloped, and then the adjoining properties, we think, would be redeveloped as well to other types of commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments, any desire to have any item removed from the consent agenda? Okay, I'll ask for a motion and second on the consent agenda as presented.
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? See none? I'm going to ask the clerk take the roll call vote on the consent agenda as presented.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Quid seven.
Okay, there were no items removed from the consent agenda, so that takes us to a pending ordinance. And this is the second reading on this. It's Ordinance 14-522, canceled December 23, 2015 council meeting. Anybody like to comment on that? See no one come forward? I'll bring it back to the council and ask for a motion, a second on Ordinance 14-522.
Still moved.
Been moved, been seconded.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, which means after today, we won't be meeting as a regular council until the second Tuesday in January. Not, no, we'll have the December 9 meeting. We have the December 9 meeting, and then we won't meet on the 23rd, and then it'll be the second, the second Tuesday in January. We still do have the December 9 meeting. Okay, ask the clerk take the roll call vote.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Quid seven.
Okay, it takes us to a new ordinance. We won't be voting on this one tonight. I will read it twice. If you'd like to comment on it, feel free to come forward. It's Ordinance 14-523, create ordinance pertaining to bicycle lane restrictions. It's Ordinance 14-523. See no one coming forward to speak to it? So we'll move on the agenda. Now, pending resolution, it's the one that's come back to the council. Resolution 14-524, approve 2015 business improvement district operating plan and budget. Anyone like to come forward to discuss that at this point? See no one coming forward? I will bring it back to the council. We've already had a motion and second on this at an earlier meeting. Correct?
You want to get it back on the floor?
Okay, we need a motion and a second.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to put it back on the floor. Further discussion then on approved 2015 business improvement district operating plan and budget. I see none. I'll ask the clerk to take the roll call vote.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Present.
Quid six, one present.
Okay, the next thing, it takes us to new resolutions. Resolution 14-525, approval of special event, Christine Anne Domestic Abuse Services, Inc. to utilize streets for their Race for Light walk run, December 6, 2014. Anybody like to come forward? See none?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, as the founder and director of the Race for the Light, I'll be excusing myself from the dais.
Motion and a second on Resolution 14-525?
Still moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? See no discussion? I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on Resolution-525.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Quid six.
Okay. That takes us to the next resolution, which is Resolution 14-526, adopt the 2015 city budget. Would anybody like to come forward to make comments on the city budget? Okay, I will ask, then I'll bring it back to the council for a motion, a second on the 2015 city budget.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. What, I will say that there may be some amendments to the budget. If there are amendments, after somebody moves and seconded amendment, I will provide an opportunity for, for people who are in the council chamber to come up and comment on the particular amendment, as we always do. What I could do is go down, there are some proposed amendments here. What I might do is go down each one and see if somebody wants to move a particular one as we go through them, but I thought I'd go through them in order in which they're here. Everybody have them in front of themselves that are here. We all set, all set over there?
Uh huh.
Because anything that's amended is going to affect things further on that we're going to take a look at with respect to the city budget, so we have some folks with Trina Larson, our finance director, who's going to be doing some recalculating if amendments are passed by any, for any reason. Okay, the first one there was all departments health insurance fund, reduce the surcharge and rebuild the fund balance over a period of three years rather than a couple of years. Anybody care to make a motion on that?
I would move to amend the budget accordingly.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Would anybody like to have discussion on that, from the audience? Like to come to the micro? See no one come forward? I will, I will bring it back to the council for any discussion. I should say that several of these have been discussed at prior meetings. We had seven budget meetings coming into tonight, and so a lot of these have been discussed, so there might not be as much discussion tonight as there was leading up to the, the particular motions, in which there was quite a bit on some of these, so. Okay, I'll have it back here. Any, any further discussion from council members? Seeing, oh, sorry. Seeing none, I will ask clerk to take the roll call vote on, actually, what it will do, will reduce expenditures by $120,000, as is proposed. It'll affect all departments, and it has to do with reducing the surcharge and rebuilding the fund balance over three years rather than two, and it will result in a savings of the budget of $120,000, so.
To the general fund, yes.
Okay. I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on that particular amendment.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Quid seven.
Okay, the next one is CIP, maximize borrowing and reduce levy cash contribution to the tune of up to $100,000. In essence, would be moving some money around to make that savings. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to amend the budget to reflect the maximized borrowing and reduce the levy. Second.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, I'll ask, anybody like to come forward? Feel free to do so. See no one come forward? Bring it back to the council for discussion.
I have a question of the city manager on this one, though. How does this affect our tenure plan to get our, our debt down? Is that going to drastically affect that? I mean...
Not, not at all, because what we're doing is we're actually, well, after the suggestion was made by Mayor Tower at the last budget work session, we took a look at a couple things. The first thing is our 11.4 million cap that we've imposed on ourselves, we were actually 42,000 below that in the proposed budget. So that 42,000 was immediate. We, that was the first. Then, as we went through some discussions that took place during budget work sessions, we identified that we had budgeted, we'd moved some monies into the operating budget, and we had them booked in both the CIP as well as the, the operating budget. So we were able to remove that one, so that was another 55. And that got us down to 97, so we are going to be $3,000 over our borrowing cap with this change. Plus or minus 11.4, that's, that's...
Okay. So we're still within, and it's still working with our strategic plan and everything?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And there are no, previous councils had a habit of borrowing long-term for short-term assets. There are, in this particular proposal, we are not borrowing 10 years of money to pay for something that will have a useful life of, life of five years? That is correct. We will not be doing that. In fact, I got an email today, I think several of you did, Mr. Cornell can't be here tonight, and he wanted to make sure because there was $5,000 in the CIP for something, and $5,000 is exactly one of those that you point out, Mr. Peck. We've moved that into the operating budget, and it's those types of things that we're, we're not going to be borrowing for. All right, because like I say, previous councils had made a habit of that, and we not only pay the, the principal, we had to pay interest on it as well. So it's not smart to use your credit card to put gas in your fuel tank, so to speak.
Yeah, I was the one that originally kind of, kind of proposed this. I think it's a good idea because it's going to help us save another $100,000 and begin to get that, the overall tax rate down. I think it's important, and I don't see negative consequences to it. I'd ask the city manager, the finance director, to look at ways that this could be done, and one of the interesting things was that they found some, some, some double billing in there, so that, that took care of a good share of it, so that, that was helpful to make it easier, so we do less of what Mr. Peck suggested. Okay, any other comments? I'll ask city clerk to take the roll call vote on the changes in the CIP, which will result in a savings of another $100,000.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Quid seven.
Okay, so now... Mr. Mayor, if it would help, I didn't do it after the last one, but just to give you a running tally of where you're at, and those were two of the larger ones. We are now, our levy is now down to $33,221,800. It's a 3.72% increase at this point. So, they just, and I can, we'll keep giving you a running, running tally of how we're doing following your, following your decisions.
That's good, because individuals don't have to do it that way. Okay, the next one, transportation, go transit, eliminate Saturday service, Route 10 could save $3,200. Anybody like to speak to that? I'll ask the seat, actually, we've got to wait for a second.
I don't think that's a good idea, because there's people that count on the, the trans on Saturday. I know there's other ways, too. You know, you start taking away from people that need the transportation. I don't think it's going to help.
No mistake. Is there a motion or a second on this one?
Actually, Mayor, I would like to see that removed from this list.
You don't have to remove it, just, if, if there's no motion or second, it's gone.
Okay.
So if nobody moves it, it's gone. Now, if somebody moves it, then you can argue against it, so there's no need to actually remove it from the list. Is that okay?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
So I don't see a motion or a second, so it's gone. So I don't see a motion or a second, so it's gone. The next one was the, that'll be the same on all these. If nobody moves them or seconds, they just disappear. The other ones from the administration, IT eliminate a PC tech for $56,400. Is there a motion or a second on that? Okay, that's one I'd like to see, so I'll move it. I'd like to second it. Okay, with that one, no go. The next one is administration maintenance, eliminate PT custodian to save $30,000.
I have a question on that one.
Sure, go ahead, raise it before we get to it.
Where, where does this position work out of City Hall? Does it work out of, is it a rolving, part-time position wherever needed kind of situation?
It primarily works in City Hall, but it also works in the Public Safety Building. It can also go over to the senior center, as well as sometimes, depending on what needs are, it can, it'll be outside doing snow removals in the winter. It can be over at the convention center, depending on what needs are. It, it moves around quite a bit.
And being a part-time, is that, does that position have any kind of benefits, or is it strictly a salary position? Or are the benefits prorated based on, is it a 50% time position, 35% time position?
I think Mr. Fitzpatrick probably knows more of the details about that level of detail than I do. I'm not sure if Trina knows.
I don't have the percent time. I think it should be listed in the budget book in our departmental section. But to answer your question, Mark was, was correct. It is a position that we share with a variety of other departments.
So is that, being that said, Mr. Fitzpatrick, does that mean it's in like three different budgets, too, or is it listed in one budget and that?
I believe we budgeted in our budget just for ease of, of tracking for the costs.
Okay.
And I think, I think this is a benefited position. I know city manager Roloff and finance director Larson are taking a look at that right now.
It's 80%, it's an 80% position.
That satisfy you?
Yeah.
Any questions there?
Yep.
Anybody want to, like to move the elimination of the PT custodian? Okay, that one is gone. The next one has to do with the city manager's office, administrative assistant retirement, hold the position open until 1/1/16. That would save $20,000. Is there a motion or a second? I hear no motion or second. I'll take that off the list. The next one is community development planning, eliminate an assistant planner, which would save $65,000. Is there a motion or a second? Eliminate that one. The next one is fire, 2% salary savings by attrition and basically holding some positions open. That would save 160,900. Is there a motion or a second? Seen none? The next one is the police department, 2% salary savings, attrition, hiring freeze, layoff. Would save 168,700. Is there a motion or a second? Eliminate that. The next one is public works, eliminate engineering specialist. There are savings of $60,000. Is there a motion or a second? Eliminate that one. Number 11 on here is all departments cut non-represented market adjustment to 1%, which would be saving of $130,000. Motion or a second? Seen none?
Mayor, could I, I'd like to make a motion to, to cut, cut the market adjustment to 1% and also to restore pay for, pay for performance program in place that we've had in the past.
Okay, so what you're doing is taking number 11 and combining it with number 14B. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
You're looking to combine that, and it would, the motion would be to, to go to 1%, but basically put the money back in and then some to restore the pay for performance. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So the net effect on that would be an increase of $30,000 to the budget?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty, you're right. It's 130, no, no. The net, the net effect of those two things would be $20,000 increase in the budget. Is there a second? Seconded to get it on the table at least. Any discussion? Anyone want to come up and speak to that? Seen none, I'll bring it back to the council. Any further discussion on the cutting the market rate adjustment and restoring the pay for performance program?
Mr. Mayor, I just, I mentioned it because I, I, you know, the, the pay for performance program, the compensation amounts to about a 1% increase anyway. We had this, this is the discussion we had, excuse me, during the 2014 budget, cumulatively it would amount to, to essentially the same pay increase. Of course, different individuals would, would have a, a different increase based on what they're receiving now, and, and if they received the, the paper performance. But the, the reason for doing so is, is I believe strongly in the paper performance program, that the council adopted it last year, and it's, it's something that I think we need to continue to support and support in, in the model that it was presented to us a year ago. I, I, I think it's important that we continue to show that commitment to the employees, and I, I think ultimately, you know, I, we, we talk about every year how, how employment is, is our largest, part of our budget, and it's the largest increase to our budget every year, and that's going to continue to be the case going forward. A move towards pay for performance is, is a move away from the across-the-board increases that, that we've used historically, and a move away from the step increases that we've used historically, and a move toward the manner that a number of private sector employees typically provide wage increases and salary increases to their, to their employees.
Other comments?
Mayor?
I agree with most of what you said, except the concern I have is we're below market
now on quite a few of our employees, and I think a 2% puts us back in a competitive, it came out during the budget workshop that we've had a 6% loss of employees. I think part of it is because of our salary structure is low, although I do support the pay for performance, and I'd like to actually put that back in if we could with some savings, but I, I, I feel we need to stay at that 2%. When you look at what ended up in negotiations with the police fire already, they're getting 2.5% pay raises, now our non reps are only going to get a 1% pay raise. That gap just gets wider and wider between the unions and the non reps. And I think, I know a lot of them would like to get that pay for performance if we can afford to put it back in, but I also think that 2% means a lot to a lot of our employees who have taken a, a pretty good hit in insurance and some other things. So I'm, I'm not going to support the, the motion.
I'd make the general comment that if, if people were going to argue to put the pay for performance back in, I would agree with the 1%, because in essence, our wage increases would be at a little over 2%, and that would even make us more than competitive out there. I've done some, look at the, what the other increases are in the other cities, and they're the ones up and down the valley, and then four other ones, and they range from the represented increases from 1% to 2%. And many of those have gone for pay for performance, and they've eliminated steps along the way also. We have steps at the current time, as well as across-the-board wage increases. At this point, I'll vote against it, because I, I'm not for restoring the pay for performance program, because I think the administration made the recommendation to do otherwise. So I will vote against this motion. Comes up, we end up talking about pay for performance again, I'll only support that if the second part of this motion goes through. Okay, any other comments? Seen none, I'll ask clerk, take the roll call vote on the motion, which would involve cutting non-represented market adjustment to 1% and restoring the pay for performance, which would be a net increase of $20,000 in the budget.
Herman?
No.
Ellison Osby?
No.
Pansky?
No.
Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Cummings?
No.
Peck?
No.
Tower?
No.
Lost 1-6.
Okay, the next one is transportation, street lighting, reduce WPS lights bid block to save $35,000. Is there a motion or a second? I seen neither. That will come off the list. The next one, number 13, is economic development, reduce EDC funding per capita from $2 to $1, which would save $66,300. Is there a motion or a second?
I, I, I wanted to discuss this one, so I want to get it on the table.
If you have a question?
So I'll make a.
I'll let, I'll let others discuss it. If you, if you want to make a point, go ahead.
Okay. I, I, I mean, I, I support this, and I support really the amount. I guess I, I wanted to at least be able to try and make a advisement maybe to, to staff on paying this. I mean, there's a concern that I've, I've continued to share on, on our funding for economic development over the last year, and since we adopted this, it's just that if there's a contribution that exceeds what, 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 exceeds private investment, it makes the entity a, a, a public entity and, and subject to open records a lot, open meetings a lot. Yeah, you know, in an ideal world, I, I guess I'd like to suggest a matching, match, matching the contribution from private investors up to this 100 and, well, the, the total amount, I think, that the one, we're saying, 1, 120, 127?
Oh, our contribution would be more like 130.
Well, plus that, 30 now, yeah. But I, I guess it's, it's in the 160, 170 range. I, I, if, if, if for some reason, I know there's a lot of speculation in the community that maybe, maybe the private investment drive won't exceed this contribution that the city's making now. I'm also hearing rumors from others in the community that it could far exceed it, in which case the concerns that I'm sharing won't be an issue. But if, if, if for some reason the investments, there are the, the donations raised by private investors doesn't exceed our amount that the city's donating, in, in addition to the amount that the county's donating, you know, we're, we're going to have some concerns that I know GoEDC doesn't want to have, the city doesn't want to have, and, and myself as a private business owner in the community doesn't want to have, along with the rest of my colleagues. So I, I guess if there's some, I, I, ultimately, the bottom line is if, if, if we can pay an amount that's, that's, that's equal to the contributions by private investors, if, if for some reason they, they don't, don't achieve this 166,000.
If we don't have at least 1.5 to 2, private to public ratio, we would have trouble. I believe we're going to be close to a 2 to 1 ratio when all is said and done.
And that would be.
I'm very, I, I've been very pleased with the response that, that I've heard from other members of GoEDC who have been making visits. We're very encouraged, and it's just, it's very encouraging with everything we've been doing. So you're actually making me do my report for GoEDC now, but we're going to be bringing that back as far as the authorization for a contract. That's going to be at the next council meeting, and I've given you a draft in your weekly pack to take a look at that. But our, our goal is really about 2 to 1 when all is said and done.
I think there'll be, a lot of people will be on the same boat, so I think really the time to talk about that is when that agreement comes back for discussion, is being part of.
Yeah, I assume, I just.
The points well taken and recognized by.
And I don't know that there's a way it can be formulated into the budget other than to just approve the amount that, that we're looking at right now, so.
Good. As I say, the city manager will be bringing forth an agreement between.
Correct.
The city, and then, and that, that might be appropriate time to make sure that gets injected. Okay, so there, I don't see, you're not going to make the motion?
No, no.
Okay. Okay, the next one, A is all departments restore pay for performance program with alternative compensation, hybrid payer vacation days. Is there a motion or a second?
I would move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Anybody like to comment on that? If not, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion.
Just have a, go ahead.
No, I'll defer to the general.
Well, just, I just had a quick question, and I know we received a memo from Mr. Fitzpatrick, kind of calculating, roughly calculating this amount, but is this, are we, are we, we're, we're talking about this for budget purposes as a, as a cash amount versus an intangible amount?
Option 14A assumes that we would give the employees the option of a cash or a vacation option, and we believe that about 3/4 of the employees would take the cash versus a vacation option. That's what 14A says.
Okay, okay. And this is, and, and I'm sorry, when I said cash, I meant kind of in the accounting vernacular, but, 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 but that this 112.5 is a cash representation. I mean, we're, we're not, we're not applying, we're not attributing a, a cash value to the, to the intangible use that employees may take if they take the days off.
No, we're not.
Okay, okay.
We would, no.
All right, thank you.
Other comments?
I think council has spoken to our support of the pay for performance plan previously,
Okay, I'll, I'll oppose this, because we had that opportunity before to do one or the other, and I, I think, as I look at what's going on, part of the idea of having pay for performance and the 2% and the other is to be competitive, and I think we're going to be even more than competitive. 2% across the board, if we do this, 112. Are, are you also indicating the question for you, because I've asked for this before, is, so people, because what my concern, conceptually, I don't like the idea of giving days off, because in a sense, we're giving away, we're basically giving up services to the citizens in essence to provide extra compensation to employees, and I'm, and I'm not sure that that's a good idea. If we do that, it obviously has a dollar value to it, just as you pointed out in the memo to the council before, what it would have been last year. So there would be a dollar value if people chose, or are you saying it wouldn't, the dollar value would not exceed 112,000? One of my problems is, is this came up at the last minute, the seventh, it was a last-minute throw-in, and we really haven't seen a, the proposal, and the proposal has changed, that you were talking about all giving days off.
Yeah.
And, and that time, it looked like it would be, under your proposal, was looking like that would be the equivalent of two to three positions, and we heard before how important positions were, we can't cut positions, and now we're talking about dropping positions. Services, not putting it in budget-wise, but it does have a budget impact, because in essence, you're giving away, you're increasing people's compensation by increasing.
It has an economic value. It doesn't necessarily have a budget value, because we don't necessarily need to increase the budget. The departments will use their discretion on how they want to do that, and different departments will do it different ways. The economic impact is almost equivalent to the $150,000. If, if you take a look at that, we, we took a look at if we had done what we were suggesting on a time value for last year. Last year, the value of the paper performance program ended up being about 155,000. The time off equivalent has an economic value of about 147,000. It's very close, but it's a little bit less than that. So it's just, it's based on an average wage. We just did some, some costing out, assuming some, some average wages. But when you ask that question, what's the economic impact, it's, it's pretty comparable to the cash. It's just a matter of departments can, can manage their schedules, but the value is, the value of cost is certainly comparable.
Well, when you do a budget, you're doing dollars, but you're also talking about services. So in essence, we would, we could be reducing services up to two and a half positions to three.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it'd be no different.
Depending on how you look at it, when we couldn't find any positions to reduce, or we're going to reduce services to citizens to increase compensation to employees.
Yes.
But I, I don't think that's a good concept. I'll vote against it.
Can I just ask a question for Lynn? Can we go back if, if I'm thinking about approving this 14A, but in conjunction with 11? Or has that already been removed?
You could do a motion to reconsider the prior vote.
Okay.
As long as, and I think you were on the prevailing side.
Well, that was really a different motion, though.
Mr. Fitzgerald had packaged 11 and 14A. Now the proposal here is just 14A.
No, 14A.
And so she wants, oh, she can package 11 with it.
It would be a different, I'm sorry.
So it would be different, so.
On point that, you're doing 11 would be a separate motion.
She could, you could make a motion. Good man.
Could we get a little more, I have a question on that.
Sure.
Explain a little bit of what is it, hybrid pay? What do you, because I, I know there are employees that can't get a pay raise, because they're already at, what is it, 125%?
Yeah, they're, they're above 120%.
Okay.
You may recall that after the, the pay plan was adopted, we had a presentation with staff on pay for performance, and we talked about, there were elements to the pay for performance, but the only one that we implemented the first year was pure, pure pay. If you were eligible for a pay for performance incentive, it was a cash bonus type of situation, 500 or $1,000, depending on what your specific rating was. The idea here would be, we would offer the option to the employees. And depending on where you are in your career, your life, et cetera, different people would act different ways. People who are red circled, we're only down to about 29 employees now that are red circled. It's gone down even in the last few years. It's gone down quite a bit. Clearly, those 29 people, they've been here the longest, they, they've got plenty of vacation. It wouldn't make a lot of sense for them to take time off, so they would likely take the money. People on the lower end of the scale, because they're eligible for step increases and because they don't get a lot of time off, time off may be a, a more valuable incentive to them just because of where they are in, in their life. And we would provide the option for employees. Some would take the cash, some would take the vacation. The mayor's point was that in either event, there's a value to that, and there's a, even though it may not be reflected in dollars paid out, it's in services not rendered to the city under normal circumstances. So either way you do that, we just took a projection that 3/4 of the employees would take the cash and a quarter of them would take the time off. It could be 80/20, it could be 70/30. It could be 80/20, it could be 70/30. We're just doing a projection, and the chips will fall where they may based on that.
Okay, thank you.
I need to go back to Ms. Pansky. Do you want to make a motion?
Correct. I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to amend item number 14A to run in conjunction with 11.
So, you'd be saying that that would be...
That we would cut represented market adjustment to 1%, but restore the pay-for-performance program with alternative compensation.
Okay, and that would be a net, that would be a net reduction in the budget of then, what, $27,500?
$17,500.
$17,500, correct. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the amendment to add 11 to 14A. Again, I would go back and be supportive of it because I think it's the right thing to do, is we're going to increase the compensation down there, because I think our compensation is more than competitive. We're, we have steps, we have the across-the-board, it's equal to or greater than most other cities at this point. Now, the other cities gone pay-for-performance have eliminated steps, and we're adding further compensation here, as we will be adding compensation in terms of increased dollars to benefits. So, I would support it.
Mayor, I just want to make a comment. I think we're out of order technically because, I'm not going to support it. 14A was what was on the floor, and we should have voted on that separately before.
It's 14A.
14A.
She's a betting...
11 and 14B were defeated, and now we're bringing 11 and tying 11 back to 14A when 11 has already been gone through. That would have to be a separate item, whether, after we approve, in my opinion, after we approve or not approve 14A. I don't know how you can take one that we didn't approve and tie it back into one that's on the floor now.
I would disagree because before it was 11 combined with 14B as one motion.
Isn't another question I asked before that we needed to amend there?
Yeah.
And that's what I asked.
We're treating it as an amendment to a motion.
To the motion.
I think it's...
And that's the ruling I've had from the city attorney, so that's the one we're with.
That's fine.
So, the amendments, the amendment is on the floor to add, basically, the, cut the non-represented market adjustment to 1%. Any other discussion to go along, well, to amend 14A? Clerk, take the roll call vote.
Herman?
No.
Allison Osby?
No.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
No.
Peck?
No.
Tower?
Aye.
Lost 3/4.
Okay, so the amendments lost, so we still have 14B on 14A. Now have 14A, which would result in an increase in $112,500 approximately, depending on what people talk, plus a reduction in services to the taxpayers. Any further comments on that?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment, and I, you know, I do support the pay-for-performance program, and, you know, we, it is a commitment that the council made. I'm going to approve this. I struggle with it though because this really amounts to a 3% to 4% increase than in salary for our staff, and that's a large increase compared to what the rest of the market is getting. Our employees are compensated well, and I know, I know Mr. Herman indicated there's a couple unfilled positions. We're actually blessed. There's a lot of other employers that have dozens of unfilled positions, and, you know, it's, I don't think it's necessarily because of an issue of pay. In fact, I'd argue that it probably isn't an issue of pay, but I am going to approve this even though, again, as I said, this is in total going to amount to about a 3% to 4% increase in compensation, coupled with the changes that we made in the health plan as well. That'll be even higher.
Mayor?
Okay, other comments? Ms. Herman?
Maybe I'm missing something here, but the pay-for-performance doesn't go on their bottom line. They're making 20 bucks an hour, the pay-for-performance doesn't put them up to $22, $23 an hour. Only the pay increase does. This is a one-time payout. They either get 500 bucks or 1,000 bucks, that's it. It doesn't increase their total salary in a sense, but it is a percentage, yes, you can wave it back into a percentage, but I think, I think we're misleading the citizens out there that they're getting this 3%, 4%, 5% pay increase, and they're not because it's a one-time payout, the pay-for-performance.
And they only get the pay, they only get the pay-for-performance if the performance is exceeded.
Yeah.
So, this may be, this may actually be less.
Right.
Mr. Cummings?
And it's really pure simplistic form, it's a bonus.
Yeah.
And that's how, how corporate America, it's a bonus. That's a fun deal. Here's your check and...
Social Security taxes are being taken out of it.
It's a bonus.
Medicare is being taken out of it.
It's the same way that it is with, in the private sector.
Yeah, it's compensation.
It's called supplemental pay, so it's no different than that. Again, I will go back to the point that these are only paid out if, if performance exceeds the goals that are, that are developed by the employee and their supervisor.
Yeah, I support it.
Allison Osby?
Well, and I think to concur with the fellow council members, I mean, the bottom line is, is the employees may or may not get it, so to just say it's straight across the board, you know, 3%, 4%, you know, percent increase, you know, that's not necessarily, I don't think, true, because they may or may not get it.
As well as the reduction in services is a rather nebulous comment. We have vacations built into our, people take vacations throughout the year, and you could make the argument that any vacation an employee takes is a reduction in services. It's no different than anything in the private sector. When someone takes a vacation, a lot of times a job does not get done, but it gets done when they come back. And furthermore, if I remember correctly, when Mr. Roloff discussed this, the final say of when that vacation will be approved rests with the department head, and so the department head would look at their staffing and make sure that if someone is putting in for the vacation time, that they would say, "Sorry, you can't take it at this time because of, we need this done," or whatever. So, you know, to argue is that this additional, if they take a vacation day, it's a reduction in services, then I would think that the gentleman would argue then we should take all vacations away from people because that would be a reduction of services, and we could think of all the extra work that we could get done during that period of time.
No, I wouldn't argue that. I would argue that we staff in accordance with vacations and that vacations are part of the compensation program we put into place, and we have that in place in lieu of other things, so we're increasing the vacations. That's number one. Number two, some people can take it as an addition to their salary. They have, they have some choice in that, whether they take it with their salary or not, so it's not strictly a bonus. Also, I would hope we can move to pay-for-performance, which goes beyond on a bonus system. We really don't have a straight, really, a pay-for-performance system, as has been instituted in some of the other cities. We have a bonus system and pretty much the same system we had before, across the board, plus steps, which some people get and some people don't get depending on what happens in a given year. And ultimately, in terms of next year's budget, we are increasing the wage component within that budget period for next year relative to last year.
I would call a question.
Question to call?
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
No.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
No.
Curate 5/2.
Okay, next one is, city manager eliminate auto allo...
Just want to give you a running total, that was $112,000 added back, so we are now at 4.07% increase. Just to keep you, wanted to keep you, keep you following your tally.
Okay, then it takes it to city manager, number 15, eliminate the auto allowance for $6,000. Is there a motion or a second? I see none, so we'll go on to the next one, which is, a city clerk, remove capital outlay filing cabinets for $8,000. Is there a motion or a second? I see none. Okay, then, we really don't do the CPI at this, those, at this point, correct? Options to reduce borrowing?
At this point, no, that would be part of the CIP, because that's not going to impact...
The operations budget is, the operations budget is on the table, has been moved and seconded and amended, so now it's time for a yes or no vote on that.
Mr. Peck, I'll take care of it. Thank you for your help. Okay, anybody have any additional amendments that they would like to make? Floor is open to additional amendments? Seeing none, we'll come back to the original motion. The original, excuse me, original motion has been amended, has three amendments attached to it. Amendment one, amendment two, and the third amendment, first amendment was to reduce the surcharge for $120,000. The second amendment was to take $100,000 essentially, money put that in the CIP or actually it ended up being savings as we found out. And the third amendment was to restore 14A, to restore pay-for-performance program with alternative compensation, hybrid payer vacation to the tune of $112,500. Seeing no other amendments, I'll ask the clerk to take the roll call vote on the city budget. Vote as amended by the three amendments.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curate seven.
The next thing we need to look at is the tax levy. Do we need some time to figure out what we're going to do and revise these figures that people have? Do we need to take a little break here?
We're good or need a break?
Let's take a break.
We could just take a...
How long do you want to take?
Five minutes.
Five, 10. 10 minutes would be, would be plenty.
Okay, well, let's try and do it at 7:10, so if anyone needs to take a break, go downstairs, get a drink.
This local government meeting is currently in a break. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at OshkoshCommunityMedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. Simulcast on 101.9 FM WOCT and streamed on the world wide web at OshkoshCommunityMedia.org. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at OshkoshCommunityMedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. Simulcast on 101.9 FM WOCT and streamed on the world wide web at OshkoshCommunityMedia.org. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at OshkoshCommunityMedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. Simulcast on 101.9 FM WOCT and streamed on the world wide web at OshkoshCommunityMedia.org. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at OshkoshCommunityMedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. This local government meeting is currently in a break. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at OshkoshCommunityMedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. Simulcast on 101.9 FM WOCT and streamed on the world wide web at OshkoshCommunityMedia.org. This local government meeting is currently in a break. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at OshkoshCommunityMedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. This local government meeting is currently in a break. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at OshkoshCommunityMedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. Simulcast on 101.9 FM WOCT and streamed on the world wide web at OshkoshCommunityMedia.org.
First, to the Oshkosh Common Council, we're continuing our discussion of the city budget. We just passed the city budget. The next thing we have to do is approve the levy. Turn back to the books, folks, so it's on the page. We want to take a look at that under 26. We're going to get some key revised number on that. Look where it says, "City of Oshkosh." It says 33,441, 800 in a number of places. That's really the tax levy. We got a new number for that?
Yes. The new number is $33,334,300. And the totals will flow from that, but that's the operative number and we'll make the appropriate changes for the council.
Okay, would anybody like to come forward to speak to that number? The tax levy? The new tax levy? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to council for a motion and a second on the new revised tax levy.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? See, now, just make the general comment. I was hoping we could keep the levy a little bit less because we are going to be on the high side of increases in the levy on a macro sense. The micro decisions always get tough, but relative to other communities, we're going to be on the high side for the second year in a row. But we've deliberated it over seven meetings and had the discussion tonight, and that's where we are. Any other discussion?
One last question, Mr. Roloff. Where does this put us as opposed to, in reference to levy restraint?
The levy restraint, we are okay on levy restraint. And there's also expenditure restraint, which is the other one.
Excuse me?
We reduced our budget by $107,500. Not all of that went against expenditure restraint, but we're probably in the range of about $60,000 under expenditure restraint, give or take $10,000.
But we want to be as close to that number as possible for future budgets.
Yeah, and that's what we did, and I think we're close enough.
Okay.
My comfort zone.
Little fooling around with some other stuff to make sure we get at that number.
We can do that as well.
Okay. Okay, if there's no other comments, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on the new tax levy.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curate seven.
Okay, that takes us to Resolution 14-528, approved 2014 tax rates. So what will the new tax rate be?
The new tax rate, you'll see that portion where it says "city" and the amount will now be, the levy is 33,334,300. The rate will change from 9.593 to 9.562. And you'll see that change just go throughout the entire document. Any reference to city tax, the levy and the rate will be changed, and then things will flow from those based on the retotals.
Okay, and that'll be an increase over last year.
That will be a 4.07% increase and it'll be a 28.1 cent increase in the rate, 28.1 cents.
Anybody like to come forward to speak to that? Bring it back to the council for the motion and a second on Resolution 14-528.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on Resolution 14-528.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curate seven.
Mr. Mayor, just as a point of information, I had given you a report that Ms. Larson had provided me with the changes that are going on at some of the other jurisdictions and whatnot. Our overall tax rate will be $25.108, is it 106, which is about a 3.4 cent drop in our overall rate. So between the school districts and the tech is going down significantly. School districts up, we're up, tech's down, so the net effect is about a 3 cent decrease in the rate that the taxpayers will receive when they get their tax bill.
So the good news is, is the taxpayers on their property tax will get a benefit out of it. However, really, the tax schools have not been eliminated, haven't gone down at all. It's been transferred to the state, which is one of the reasons they have a $2.2 billion shortfall.
We'll see how they work that out.
About a quarter of that is due to that, so we'll get it later. Okay, let's go back to Resolution 14-529, approved 2015 capital improvement plan. Anybody like to come forward to talk about that?
Dan Ryland, 602 East Parkway. I'm here to urge your support to finally get my street in order. Couple statistics on East Parkway if you're interested. For many ways, it was one of the main arteries to the Old Mercy Hospital. People go up Main, drive down, go to the hospital. This was not a street that ever had concrete, so this is a bad street to begin with. And this one is going to blow your mind. Thanks to Go Transit, I figured out that there were 259,200 trips on buses on two blocks on East Parkway, mine being one of the blocks, between 1996 and 2014. 259,200 trips. Now, I didn't do the weight of the bus versus a car, but you could probably get another factor of at least three or four. So that street has been beaten to death, beaten to death by buses, and it needs help, obviously, huh? And so I hope you will support that. Couple suggestions on that. One is the railroad crossing on Parkway just west of Grand is probably the highest elevation now in East Oshkosh. We refer to it jokingly as Roloff's Ridge. It's getting higher every time you fix it. So maybe between you and the railroads, you could work it out where you could kind of level it out. If not, we're going to call it Potex. I can't think of the alliteration. We're going to name it after him if it goes higher, but it's really high, okay? Second suggestion, and this may be totally out of order. This is a speed drag race from the railroad tracks to Bowen or Bowen back to the tracks. It's just 40, 50 miles an hour. And we've got the Boys and Girls Club in that block, which is growing. In fact, some of the neighbors over on Monroe have been offered to buy out their properties, so they're going to supposedly move over on that street and build a swimming pool. Now, that's neighborhood gossip, but two of the people have been offered, you know, they want to buy their house. So that will just add more congestion to it. So I'd like you to consider at some point three speed bumps. One between Grand and Monroe, right in the middle of the block, one between Monroe and Boyd, and one between Boyd and Bowen. If you're not going to enforce it by speeding, and it's not being enforced by speeding, just let the people wreck their cars. You know, it'd get wrecked when they go off of Roloff's Ridge, but the other three blocks with the speed bumps would really curtail, I think, speeding in that area. And it needs to be controlled because of the growing business of the Boys and Girls Club. By the way, there's no markings that it's like a school or anything, and so it needs to be, we need some safety there. It's an accident just waiting to happen. So that's all I have to say. You've had a long evening, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment on the capital improvement budget? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council and ask for a motion and a second on the capital improvement plan as presented.
So moved. Second.
Okay, discussion. Again, there were some, there've been some proposals here regarding capital improvement budget, so we can go down those and see where we go with respect to these and see if there are more after that. One, I have a question on number two there, the maximize the borrowing and reduce cash contribution. We've sort of already done that, or?
That's been done...
Or do we need to take separate action on that?
From my standpoint, the council's already taken that action with your previous action, so thank you for pointing that out. That's, so we are at, right at $11,400,000 as we speak for our borrowing. And we wanted to give you, that was sort of the equivalent of the tax levy. The running tally on this is the borrowing. So as we stand, based on council's action and the operating budget, we're at 11,400.
So one's all right and taken care of. Or actually, it's listed as two on here. Number one was a... Okay, so we're at 3A and Grand Opera House, complete budgeting project over two years, and that could create a savings of $62,500. Is there a motion or a second? I see neither. So we'll remove that. Next one is 3B, Grand Opera House, remove carpeting project. That would save $125,000. Is there a motion or a second?
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Would anybody like to come forward and discuss that?
Do I have to introduce myself? Do I do that thing?
Yes, please.
Joe Roloff, 230 Devonshire Drive, Director of the Grand Opera House. I understand where you are. I'm trying to pull things out of the budget and trying to save the taxpayers' money, and I applaud that. The carpeting that we're talking about in the Grand is over 25 years old, and we have 50,000 to 80,000 people walking on it at any given year. My biggest concern, truthfully, is that it's in pretty good shape. The folks who renovated the Grand, folks who supervised the renovation of the Grand all those years ago did a fabulous job of finding a quality product that's held up great over the years. When we were closed in 2009, 2010 for the repair project, we found a lot of areas where that carpet could no longer be stretched, could no longer be pulled, could no longer be fixed. There were some nice short-term repairs done in some areas. And my only concern is that if we don't, how you act tonight is how you act tonight, but if we don't raise the issue that this is going to become an issue, then I'm concerned that we'll get to a point where suddenly you have a safety hazard, we're trying to do a short-term fix, we're trying to do something less than standard for a public building that gets that kind of traffic. I'm not here to try to change your mind on any actions you're trying to do tonight. We've got bigger fish to fry in this regard. What I really just want to call to your attention to is it is a concern that's going to become a greater concern as increased traffic happens, and I urge you to put that into your decision tonight, and regardless of where your decision leads, at the end of the night, put it into the back of your mind, because if not this year, next year. It's going to be a problem that soon is going to become a safety problem. And I just wanted to call it to your attention and look upon your faces, because I haven't in a while, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Anybody else care to comment on it? If not, people aren't coming forward, so I'll bring it back to council for discussion on removing the carpeting project to the tune of $125,000 and the capital improvement project. Comments?
Yes, Ms. Pansky?
I actually just saw Joe on Sunday. I went to the Grand on Sunday, and I did have it in the back of my mind that this was on the CIP, and my focus was initially to look at the carpeting in the Grand. And when I got in there, that was kind of the last thing that I paid attention to. There's so many other things going on in that building that wasn't a focus. And I do understand the safety concerns, and thank goodness we haven't had any of those issues to deal with at this point, and I hope that we don't. But it's just, it's not the first thing that comes to my mind when I think of the Grand Opera House. I don't, with the exception of the CIP item, I don't purchase a ticket to go look at the carpeting in the Grand Opera House. Using Mr. Roloff's analogy, to me, it's not a gotta-do, a need-to-do. It's something that we should do, and I don't think that this is the time to do that.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I just want to add that as the liaison from the council to the Grand Opera House Committee, the facilities committee. This has been an issue that our committee has talked about and looked at, and we're certainly kept up to date each time we meet, each quarter, on the facilities needs at that structure. I guess I'd echo Mr. Furlough's comments that this is an issue that needs to be taken care of at some point, and probably sooner rather than later. It's not a dire need, but it is 20-some-year-old carpeting, and maybe even be older than that. Correct me. It is, it will need to be replaced. 198, okay, I'm sorry. So more than 30 years, but will need to be replaced relatively soon.
Any other comment? Yes, Ms. Allison Osby?
Yes, this was one of the things that I had touched base with John Urban about and had asked him if this was something that was imperative and needed to be done, and you know, it sounded like it was something that could go another year. Certainly, we've been put on notice that I think it's something we're going to have to take a look at down the road, but I'm certainly in support of cutting it out of this year's CIP.
Other comments?
Well, I would echo, I would say some of the, I would say something that I've often said on this council before, there's cheap and there's frugal. And I believe that taking this out of this budget is cheap, it's not frugal. If it, no matter what year it comes back, it will be more expensive. I am hoping that there, that the, that this particular budget, that this is... budget, that this is, this is only a budget-related item, that it's not related to some other issues before the council at this time. If it is, I would hope that that would not be the case. I would hope it's not the case. But again, there's cheap, there's frugal. Cheap got this city in some pretty bad situations years ago, over the years. Frugal is spending your money wisely, and I believe that this is spending the money wisely and taking care of something that has been on the radar, so to speak, as Mr. Fitzgerald said. And so I will not be supporting this, and I would urge my fellow counselors to support leaving this in the CIP.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'm going to ask Clerk take the roll call vote on the amendment, which essentially would be removing the carpeting project to the tune of $125,000 from the CIP.
Herman?
No.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
No.
Cummings?
No.
Peck?
No.
Tower?
No.
Lost 2-5.
Mayor, before you move on to an item, I'd like to bring an item back, make a motion, bring an item back, which would be 3A, make it a two-year project instead of a one-year project. I think, I understand the importance, but I think we can separate the lobby section, maybe, to the hall. And so a two-year project, I think, would be, would be more to Mr. Peck's comments of being frugal versus cheap.
No.
So I'd like to bring 3A back as an option.
Okay. In essence, where we are, we have not taken, I, we have not eliminated the carpeting project. Mr. Urban is asking for reconsideration on 3A that we said before, complete carpeting project over two years. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Which would result in-
It's actually not, Mr. Mayor, it's actually not a reconsideration. There was no motion the original time.
Okay, so?
So you don't have to go through that.
Okay, so it's a motion to complete the project over two years to the tune of 62,500 being reduced in the CIP. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Anybody like to comment on that? Ferlo, do you want to comment again?
I approve.
Okay. Okay, I'll bring it back to council for any further discussion.
Wait. Just ask, could I ask Mr. Furlough to just come forward? I'm just wondering if, you know, logistically, this creates any issues doing it over that span of time versus doing it on one-
I was thinking about it as, as Mr. Urban was bringing up the subject, where would you divide? Because the issue would be, the safety issues happen at the divisions, at the lobby to the hall, or the this to the that. But, I mean, we work together on this. I think that probably the entrance lobby, to put the full picture on this, we did the balcony carpeting when we did the renovation, in 2009, 2010. So that's not what we're talking about. The Grand Lounge was done with the private funds when the Grand Lounge was renovated in 2009, 10. So we're talking about the entrance to the theater, and up to the historic lobby of the theater, and then basically down the aisles of the theater. The seating areas are not carpeted. So where the division would likely happen, in terms of safety, I would assume, and I, you know, I don't know a lot about installing carpet, but if we could, if one could find a way to safely make the threshold from the lobby into the Opera House proper, then I would think that maybe you could do this over a couple of years. And I, sitting here, could identify for you the priority, which would be the Opera House itself first, is the area where the potential hazards coming forward would be. So I guess my answer would be, I think you probably could make this a two-year project, if that would, you know, ease the burden and make things easier.
I would just add one thing, Mr. Mayor. I did talk to Mr. Urban about this possibility, because it was on the agenda, and he spoke with some carpeting folks, and because of the nature of the carpeting, it would likely be more phased in purchasing the carpeting, and after the carpet's purchased, see how much money's left, to see what installation could take place, because you don't want to purchase a carpet like this in two stocks, because the die lot can be different, and you'll get two different, you'll essentially get two different carpeting, even though you tried to get one. So how we do it, we'll worry about, we'll take care of that, we'll work with Mr. Furlough, we'll work with our staff, and we'll report to you. But if you do it over two years, we'll likely look at buying the carpet and then figuring out when and how we do the installation.
This would be a great opportunity for me to say that Mr. Urban does a fabulous job doing exactly what he just did, which is finding a way to keep this building maintained and to do it in a way that makes you all happy. So I would agree with whatever work John did in advance as to how this might break down.
Just to quote John, John wrote, "Most carpet manufacturers require a certain minimum yardage for custom pattern stocks, and we may need to order all the material at one time regardless." So that's kind of what we would be thinking. But we'll worry about those details, depending on what council does.
You partially answered my question. This is a custom carpet. Are you just replacing what's in there now as far as color and pattern?
I would think that we'd want to stay with the sympathetic restoration of the Grand that was done in 1986, and we would want to replace that custom mill pattern with the exact same pattern.
I agree.
If possible. I think we need to honor all that work that was done back in the 1980s, researching.
The real issue would probably come down to, and this is the other thing Mr. Urban brought to my attention, it'd be the wool versus nylon. In the 1980s, when we did the carpet originally, we put in a wool carpet. The wool is very durable. Back then, nylon wasn't as durable, and I think that's something that Mr. Urban believes, that the Grand Opera House Advisory Board, this might be an appropriate project for them to evaluate the various options available to them. Is there a carpeting, excuse me, a nylon carpeting that's more durable? 30 years ago, nylon wasn't very durable. It's improved over time. If we can find something that is honoring the historical nature of the Grand, we could do that, too. But that's something we would look at as well.
Ms. Allison Osby?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Cummings, did you want him to go first?
Oh, he already did.
Okay, okay.
I think you finished, didn't you?
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Did you get a sense, Mr. Roloff, from Mr. Urban, you know, if he felt that it was better to do it all at once versus in stages? Did he, the impression that I had gotten from him was that it could, it's doable over two years, but ideally, at once is better. But I mean, you guys might have had a separate discussion after we had the discussion a week ago.
Very briefly, but it was really more, whatever we do, get the carpet in one fell swoop, and we can worry about the installation details later. That was what Mr. Urban was suggesting. It's really important to get that carpet at one time. So we would likely put it on order and then take a look at how much that costs based on the bids. If we can go nylon, we might actually get a better deal anyway. And Mr. Urban was erring on the side of a wool carpet replacement. If we don't do a wool carpet replacement, that we could save even more money as opposed to the 125. But he was playing on the safe side that if it was wool, and if we did it all at one time, it would be 125.
So at this point, we really don't know what we want, because the research necessarily hadn't been done?
Correct. We haven't gotten to that level of research yet. But what we would likely do is, given whatever money, monies we were given, we would first order the carpet and then determine what we could install in 2015, and what we would have to do to get the rust installed in 2016.
Mr. Corvus?
Because this is a custom carpet, what's the lead time?
I was just going to ask.
You know, it's difficult to say. To be honest, we probably, and this speaks a little bit to Ms. Allison Osby's question, too. It's hard to guess in a project like this when the last time the work was done was 30 years ago. A lot's changed. The nature of the product's changed. And not knowing whether or not we had a fighting chance of going through this process, I would guess that Mr. Urban probably went as far as he felt comfortable going without knowing whether or not he had a project on his hands or not. We have had, with prior councils in prior years, in the 10 years I've been here, projects that have slid three, four, five years, or until they became a crisis. And so he probably, we didn't get far down the road on wool versus a modern product, or what it might cost a custom mill, or what the lead time would be, the actual production time on it. So I understand why there's probably not an answer. I don't know if that's an adequate enough response for you, but I think it's just difficult at this point to know what our options are 30 years from original installation. All we have our hands on is, there's got to be a better way, maybe there's a less expensive way, and we want to honor the original look.
Anybody else make questions, comment? It just seems that it could be a two-year project in terms of budget, I mean, we're talking about budgeting here, where the dollars are going to go out. So if we did it in the second half of the year, you could probably figure out how to pay for half of it this year and half of it next year on a capital improvement budget.
Right, and the logistics issue, we haven't even talked about either.
So we've got a ways to go.
We're at the height of the season. We're not putting the carpet in at the height of the season.
There's roughly a span of about five weeks in the summer when you can get a solid time that there's not some kind of activity going on in the theater. So it is, it'll be an issue of timing, certainly.
So we'll have to look at that. If they say, oh, the carpet will be ready in September, we may be looking at a two-year project by definition. If somebody says, it's a two-month lead time, we'll have it ready here in the second week of June, we could do it in one year. But logistically, it's hard to say right now. We haven't delved into it that much yet.
If it's helpful to you, I don't, I'm standing here right now, thinking about the process, I don't see how it's not, as Mayor Tower said, a project that couldn't start in one year with a certain amount of funds committed to it, that would likely extend into an install, production install, that goes into a second year, just by nature of the fact that we're going, we're looking at custom milling a carpet, researching the product, and then dealing with the process. If that's helpful to you at all.
Any other comments? Okay, if not, ask Clerk take the roll call vote on completing the carpeting project over two years, which would save $62,500 from this year's CIP budget.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
I'm, thank you, thank you.
Aye. Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
No.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
No.
Tower?
Aye.
Curried 5-2.
Okay, next we have remove library carpeting, which would save $69,700. Is there a motion, a second?
So moved.
Been moved. Is there a second? One more time, is there a second? Okay, there's no second. Fails for lack of. Okay, then, last item that I have here is storage racks, electric division. I assume that means eliminate those, so $225,000. Is there a motion, a second? I see none. Okay, what was the final vote, again, on the two-year project?
5-2.
5-2, okay. All right, so any other amendments on the capital improvement plan? Seeing none, we have an amended motion here. So it'd be the 11,400 minus 62,500?
11,400.
Oh, I mean, 11, oh, yeah, 11 million.
Just a few zeros off.
11,400,000.
You're only off by zero.
11,400,000 and 62,500.
11,337,500 would be the general fund borrowing.
What was that?
Okay, other discussion on it? Ask Clerk take the roll call vote on the CIP borrowing.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Curried 7.
Okay, that takes us to council discussion. Directional City Manager and future agenda items. Our GOEDC update. Mr. Roloff?
I think I gave a brief update based on Mr. Fitzgerald's question. So we're making the rounds with everybody else and pointing out that the city was planning to be a big donor, and that's important to the private donors, and so that's a very powerful statement we're making, and we'll have the agreement, because as the Prager Study talked about, the idea for the city's contribution has to do with service contract. And we gave you a draft of that service contract, and we'll have that, we'll clean it up and provide it to you for consideration at the December 9 meeting. And that's all I have in that area.
Okay, the sex offender, future agenda items, sex offender workshop. We talked about this, some couple possible dates we're going to look at or throw out or suggest. People were asked to bring their calendars, determine what a date might work. Anything recommended there? We talked about a week in there?
We talked about the week of January 26, when we have a meeting on the 27th. Couple options were to either have it Monday night, or, and sometimes, depending on how deep the agenda is, we could do, we could do a workshop immediately following the workshop, or following the council meeting was another option. You know, the mayor's the only one who was on the council. We used to have the meetings at the end, but our meetings ended at 9:30, 10 o'clock. Starting a workshop at the end of the meeting was quite tiresome. If you had a meeting shorter that ended 7:30, start a workshop at a quarter to 8:00, you'd probably still be a little fresher. Or alternatively, have it on a Monday.
Perfect. Be opposed to doing it on the same night as a regular council meeting, I think. People have indicated that they have a number of questions they want to ask, and might want some, to make some comments. And the one, we moved away from that old process because the nights got so long, and some of the workshops didn't get as fully developed as people hoped they would. And I think we put this one off, so I think that's a dangerous choice to go after a council meeting.
I agree. I think we've put this on, off long enough that we should give it the attention it deserves, and take the time to schedule this and give public input.
Is the 26 a viable date? Does anybody, can anybody, does anybody know just offhand that it's not a viable date?
No, right now, I'm open.
I'm open.
Obviously, things can change between now and then, but if everybody is open, let's go for it and hope. I mean, we may miss one or two. We don't want to miss, like, four, like we were going to miss that last time. That would be unacceptable. But at least everybody's open it now. What time would people like to go? Do you want to go like 5 to 7? Do you want to go like 5:30? Is that easier for Mr. Peck?
6 to 8 would be much better.
6 to 8?
I could, I could make 5:30.
Yeah, I was going to say, the housing authority meets that day, and they're typically going past 5, so.
So you'd prefer-
Something in the 5:30, 6 o'clock range is going to be better.
I'm open either way.
5:45.
There you go.
5:45.
The eternal compromise.
Let's just go 6 to 8 on the 26th of January. Okay, we got that done. Okay, the next thing, the strategic plan presentation, that is going to be on the 9th.
Staff's going to be providing, where we are with strategic plan, the goal would be for the council to approve the strategic plan at the first meeting in January. Now that we have the budget, it'll really be reflective of what's, the resources in the budget and how we plan to carry it out. We'll have the presentation on the 9th. 10 to 15 minutes is our intent with that presentation, depending on how many Q and A's you have. And similarly, we're looking at UW Oshkosh Accelerator. I've instructed them 10 minutes, just to give you an update on where we are with that project, and how the grant's going, and what the university's doing on both accelerators. There's one aviation-related and one a general accelerator. They're just going to give you an overview on that.
Mark, can I just ask a question? Will you be providing us with any information before we get it in our council packets, so that we can prepare questions, or?
The strategic plan, yes. I would like to get you that document, so you have it-
Any idea when?
-to refresh your memory. It would be in the packet prior to the meeting, so Friday's packet.
That would be the earliest that we can get that information?
I'll try to do better, but with the Thanksgiving holiday, it'd probably be sometime next week anyway. But Mr. Fitzpatrick heard you, which was the most important thing. So, and the accelerator, I'll ask. We might have, there might be some information on that. I'll check with Ms. Hartman on that.
Okay, and the next one is a workshop with the Oshkosh Area School Board. That's- That's a new one on the-
That was something, I know Councilor Allison Osby had had discussions with some school board members, and they had asked about having it. I spoke with Superintendent Stan Mack, and a board member had inquired about what the status of it was, and I said, we have a lot of workshops going on right now, but they were hoping to have some workshop after the first of the year. Not any specific agenda as opposed to just trading notes on what each of our respective boards and councils are doing. Ms. Allison Osby, I'm not sure if you had anything to add to that.
I think, you know, part of it was, you know, communicating, hearing from the school district to hear from, from our side, you know, what are some of the challenges that they have? How do our decisions, you know, with zoning or, you know, you know, building different complexes or, you know, developing neighborhoods, how does that impact the different school districts? So I think it was just to start some, some general dialogue. There was a little bit, and then it kind of died off, and, you know, I think we need to revisit that again. From our perspective, from my perspective, you know, I mean, I, I want to hear what challenges they're facing. Obviously, you know, I've expressed to them, you know, to help educate the, the citizens of Oshkosh, we do, we put in each tax bill, kind of the dollar and how that, how that works. Now, sometimes from our staff standpoint, because we collect all the tax dollars, they think we're kind of responsible for, you know, then how they're distributed in there and used in those entities. So, you know, I think it's also communication with them of how they can get the message out, as well as, I mean, we're doing our best on our end. So it's just, I think, some dialogue, and I can certainly touch base with a couple of the school board members so that, you know, we have something concrete when, you know, before a workshop, so that we've got, you know, got some tasks to actually address during that meeting.
Okay. And I'll talk to Mr. Mack as well about that. So I just wanted to let you know that that was something that was out there, and wasn't suggesting a date at this time, but perhaps by the ninth, as we look ahead. I think the value of planning ahead and getting that sex offender workshop on January twenty-sixth is because we're, we're planning ahead. So we'll get back to you on that.
Anybody else on anything on future agenda items? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move back to council member announcements and statements. April elections, that was mine, I put it on there. Couple of reasons. First of all, I think the time has come. After eleven years, four terms on the council, two terms as mayor, I'm not going to run again, either for a council position or for the position of mayor. It was a difficult decision to make. It's been a great run during the eleven years. Enjoyed it greatly. I've had the opportunity to meet a lot of people, had the opportunity to work with a lot of council members and a lot of staff and people in the community, get some kind of neat things done. I think we're positioned very well for the future. I think, though, I think maybe the citizens need somebody else up here besides me, and so I will not, not be running again. I have enjoyed it, it's been very satisfying, been an honor to serve, both on the council, been an honor to serve as mayor, been an honor to see the changes that have taken place, and just the changes in attitude about the city as a place to live, to work, and to play over time. So it's a good time for, for me to head into the other side. On a personal note, it's also time to get a little bit of flexibility into the lives of my wife and I. It's been eleven years of a structured, structured schedules, and wife's had to plan around everything, on vacations, or days off, or a whole host of things. So as we head into the next phase of our life, which will involve more travel, more extensive travel, being away for longer periods of time, more time with the grandkids, that, that will allow it. But again, I, I very much appreciate it, been satisfying, and it's been an honor, and it's been fun, fun. There are little frustrations now and then, but overall, it's been fun, particularly to watch as the city has, has grown and developed over those years. Some people say, why do I make that announcement now? The elections are not until April. Well, if you saw the paper this morning, we had an ad. And not everybody recognizes is that when the elections are in April, the time to think about it is right now, is right now. Because under our processes, if you want to be on the ballot, you have to gather some nominations and figure out what it is that you want to do and develop some campaign and things, really during the month of December. In fact, the nominations, the nominating forms are due back the first Tuesday in January, which about, that's a-
It's the sixth of January.
The sixth of January, so you really have from December, December one to the sixth of January to get the signatures if you want to run for mayor, if you want to run for council. The same thing's going to be true for the school board out there. So, so people think about it, what I would suggest to you, if you have any thought of running, and I, I challenge people to, to think about running. It's a, it's a great experience. Sometimes people say, why would you do it? You do it because it is fun, it is satisfying. It's neat to be a part of working with others to make this a better city to live. So, so give it some thought out there. If you do want to do it, what I suggest you do is that you come down to the first floor here in City Hall and go see the city, the folks in the city clerk's office, and they'll do, excuse me, an outstanding job of working you through the process, step by step. They'll have the forms for you, they'll have booklets for you, and they'll answer the questions, and they'll work with you. It's, it's just great. I remember the first time I did it, I had no idea what I was doing, but they made sure it got done, and so I was appreciative of that. So they do a great job. Okay. So for those of you that were thinking about, if he runs or doesn't run, that'll affect my decision. You know what my decision is now. There, as was indicated in the paper today, there are three council members whose, whose terms will be up at this time, and so those, those positions will be open, three on council, one for the mayor. Coming up, my guess is, is that the council members who are on the council will indicate sometime within the next few weeks as to whether or not they're going to run again or not, because that may impact or not impact decisions the people make. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, as I've often said, I respect anyone who steps to the, steps to the fore. Your service in front of this, for this community has been tremendous, and I thank you for it. I think I speak for the council, thanking you for that. And like I said, anybody that steps to the forefront has all the respect in the world. And with that, I think-
Mr. Mayor, congratulations.
Okay. Thank you. That's very kind. I'm still going to be in this position till April, so.
We ain't kicking you out.
For better, for worse, for council members or whatever, for staff.
Well, that was just a warm-up.
So I, I do appreciate that, and thanks, thanks for that. Thanks to you folks out there. Okay. Time to move on to the agenda. Citizen's statements to the council. Again, if anybody would like to come up the microphone, the microphone is open. I don't see anything, anybody, whoop, somebody's coming up. So again, name, address, limit your comments, no more than five minutes, speak directly to the council, no election hearing, even though it's about to begin, and nothing that's already been discussed on the agenda.
My name is Patricia Deener. I come to you this evening in regard to this neighborhood works. I know they want to try to make the neighborhood to work, but where I have moved, I'm going on my fourth year, there has been twelve to fourteen people out of the area between New York, Monroe, Broad. We, we just can't figure what's going on. It's rental, and it's selling homes. Plus, there's some homes that are vacant, foreclosed, they're just packed up and left. We just can't figure what's going on. I know there's a lot of things going on, but, you know, you think that you, where you bought a house, you could stay and enjoy, and then people are moving out. And some people got good ideas why they're moving out, but it's a big jump when you see all these people moving out, rental homeowners, they've been there forty, fifty, sixty years. And, you know, I see their point, like the gentleman was saying, with police patrolling, radar patrolling, and you people are maybe talking about cutting streetlights. You're just asking more for crime to go up. And I wish we could have three-speed bumps on our area, I'd love it. You know, and then people would not be ruining, they would be ruining their cars instead of going at a high rate of speed. Nobody, nobody understands just one second in a vehicle, and you could kill somebody.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else care to come forward at this point? Seeing no one, I will move to city manager announcements and statements. Mr. Rollo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's two memos in the agenda packet. They both relate to the CIP that you just approved a few moments ago.